Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for coming this morning. We appreciate everyone coming. And before we get started, we have a little bit to eat. And everyone, please, over here in the corner, we have a little bit of snacks and some drinks. And we've got enough for our visitors, so if you'd like to get a little something. We thank you again for coming. And before we get started, I'd like to go around the table and just introduce ourselves real quick, and go ahead and introduce the guests too. And since we're here in the room, and everybody will know who everyone is. Marcia.
I'm Marcia Wilson, Pluton County Commissioners.
I'm Nan Marwitz, Wayne County's Chief Assistant Superintendent.
Steve Taylor, Superintendent.
Lee Smith, County Manager.
Pam Holt, Wayne County Finance Director.
Ted Cole with Davenport Company.
Bob Hi with Davenport Company.
Chris West, Wayne County Board of Education.
Joe Dodery, Commissioner.
Ed Cromarty, Commissioner.
John Grantham, Board of Education.
Steve Keen, Commissioner, District Four.
Ray Mayo, Commissioner, District One.
Wayne Acock, Commissioner at large.
Rick Triggen, Board of Education.
John Bell, Commissioner.
Eddie Rafferty, Board of Education.
Bill Paper, Commissioner.
Norm Flower, Board of Education.
And Jack, if you would, please.
Uh, Jack Edley, Department of School Board, Martin Barford County Attorney.
Steve Perry. This little guy sleeps.
I don't know about ordinary now.
He's not ordinary.
Terry Merrill, uh, Richmond News Leader, Wayne Wilson News Leader, and Mount Olive Tribune.
Craig Reed, Pat is Wayne County School.
Dennis Sevens, Wayne County Schools.
Douglas Lawrence, Argus.
Steve Herring, News Artist.
Justin Young, Wayne County IT.
And Wayne Alley, uh, ordinary county employee.
Let me have the camera. Thank you very much for introducing yourselves. Again, we're excited this morning to be together and to hear the financials of our county. As you know, the Capital Improvement Plan was approved by the Commissioners in June to look at all of the facilities and look at all of the funding methods we have for all of Wayne County and all of its facilities, including schools. And with that, we have our meeting today, as requested by Commissioners and the Council, the School Board, to have this meeting and to go over all financials in relation, just not to schools, but for the whole county capital improvement plan that we approved in June. As you approved one in 'oh seven, we approved this one this past year. And as you all know, we have a lot to fund. And we just appreciate the school coming to us and being with us this morning and going over these figures. But that, this time, I'd like to turn it over to your Chairman, Phil Grantham, John Grantham, and ask him.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. We're, we're the Board of Education, here to be educated, and find out what we, what we can and can't do. We've got a plan, and we know you all got a lot on your plate. And we probably don't really have a good feel for everything you do have on your plate. But we have, we're kind of focused on education like we should be, and we're trying to find out how you can help us get, implement in our plan. And I don't think we're gonna need the attorneys today, obviously. Just kidding. All right, we're looking forward to a productive meeting and, uh, go ahead with the presentation.
With us, we have Ted and Bob with Davenport this morning, and Lee Smith has arranged this company to come before us today and bring us this information. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lee Smith.
I'm Dan and Dr. Taylor, and they walked in. Dr. Taylor and I, we met, went over the projects for the schools, as had been laid out by the School Board. But also, as I was talking to the Chairman last evening, you will see my board, and you had asked this, that all of the members of the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education see this document at the same time. Nobody has seen this document except staff. And it has not been distributed, it would be the first time you've seen it. There will be some information in there. It's eye-opening, but I will tell you, as I spoke to the Chair last night, this is the most detail you've ever had, as far as projects. And I think that's due to a lot of hard work on part of both boards, at looking at your projects, looking at what you need for schools, for county, and also for Wayne Community College. You're going to see a different part of this presentation today about operations which we'll be talking about. It's very inclusive of how to operate schools, power plants at the community college or a DSS. Those additional operation costs are here because we and the Board of Commissioners, and I think all of us feel that it's very important that we disclose all of the information to the general public and make sure they understand where we are and where we're going and what the costs are. So we then, as we met, kind of looked at our projects, looked at where we were financially. Pam, later in the meeting, we'll be presenting some real quick kind of facts or updates on financials. But we incorporated that, met with Ted, Bob, Mitch, and I think some other representatives from Davenport, and they have done a fantastic job and very timely and have given us some great advice. We've incorporated that into the plan, where they'll be looking at our debt ratios and looking at affordability. They'll be looking at how you, we could do this with our present revenues, and also an opportunity to look at the quarter cent sales tax. Not that anybody's asking you to do that, but we thought we would throw that in there because it is something that's available and has been mentioned. They will also discuss today issues of leasing versus GO bonds versus conventional financing, which includes COPS and that type of thing. So they'll also be covering that, because I know there's been some discussion on the part of the School Board about some of those options. And these folks have worked with counties who have done all of those things. So I believe in bringing the experts here, and then as Board members, you decide. So today is, today is just a really distribution of information. And later in the meeting, Dr. Taylor will be giving kind of an update of where you are on your engineering architectural process, which will allow us to go to the next step of actually looking at financing possibilities, because until you have the plans, you really can't pursue. So that would be the next step. So I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, turn it over to Ted Cole and Bob Hi and have them begin walking through this process. When they get to, I think it's page 15, which is all of our projects, I'll give you a real quick overview of why they're placed where they are, and then they'll jump right back into their funding analysis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've got a handout coming around that'll be exactly what's up on the screen, so some of those slides are more conducive to looking at a piece of paper right in front of you, because there are a lot of numbers on some of them. And the page numbers are in the lower right corner, so referencing pages, that's where you can find it. As those are making their way around, we can always get more if somebody wants one to take home if there's not enough. So as we walk through this, please, if there's questions or something needs to be clarified additionally from what I've discussed, please stop me and we'll go through it. As Lee said, we're here to talk about a capital funding analysis, and it is inclusive, at this point, of everything countywide, including schools. Our basic goals and objectives on page three, as a starting point, we're gonna make sure everybody's got a good understanding of your existing tax-supported debt profile. So we're just dealing with tax-supported debt. If there were any utility-related debt or other self-supporting debt, we're not dealing with that. We're gonna look at some key financial ratios, so we understand your debt profile. And the first key concept is your debt capacity. That is, your ability to take on additional debt as a county, whether it's for schools or for something else, within these ratios or within your policies. You do have certain debt policies. The county adopted debt policy years ago. So debt capacity is the ability to take on additional debt within certain measures. And along the way, we're gonna show how you compare to other peers based on bond ratings. We're gonna look at, also, the second key measure is affordability. So debt capacity versus debt affordability, they're related but different. As Lee said, we're gonna go through the detail of your capital improvement plan. He can give you some additional information on specifics there when we get to that page. And then we're gonna show how you could fund that capital program. And in doing so, we're gonna go back and see how those key financial ratios would be impacted, and specifically measure for you the affordability, what sort of additional resources will you need to come up with as a county to pay for these capital projects. Most specifically, pay for the debt associated with the capital projects and the identified operating impacts of those capital projects. Ultimately, help work our way towards a CIP plan of finance that will allow you all to move this whole process forward. In terms of the peer comparative, we're gonna base it on bond ratings. Now, a county does not currently have a bond rating, you haven't needed one, but knowing the size of your capital program, no matter what option you choose, it's almost inevitable that in time you will need to establish that bond rating to be able to access the credit market. So we care about the bond ratings, three national rating agencies, Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch. We subscribe to Moody's database, so you'll see we reference Moody's. Triple A is the highest rating that any locality can achieve. And what we're gonna compare you to is counties nationally that are rated triple A, there's eighty-one of them, double A counties, five hundred and some, single A counties, two hundred. And then within North Carolina, there are six triple A counties, forty-eight within the double A category, and eleven within the single A category. So again, in time, as you move forward, you will be more than likely dealing with the rating agencies. And when we go to the rating agencies, we wanna make sure that the plan we've developed, the discussions we've had are consistent and are gonna help yield the best possible results of that rating interaction. That's important because where we are today, post-2008, is investors and lenders place a much higher importance on credit, on your credit or the credit of the borrowers. Pre-'08, investors did very little to discern between a triple A, a double A, and a single A borrower. The borrowing rates were very, very close to one another. That's why you see these lines all sort of clustered together. Post-'08, financial crisis and some of the big headlines that you've seen, municipalities that are struggling financially, there's a, a much greater importance has been placed on your credit, your bond ratings, and it manifests itself in your borrowing rate. So pre-'08, a single A borrower borrowed about .3 percent, high at a rate .3 percent higher than a triple A. Remember, triple A is the best credit any municipality can have. Pre-'08, a single A borrower borrowed .3 percent above a triple A borrower. Post-'08, it's almost a little more than twice that, .77 percent. So being able to establish a solid credit rating, ideally in that double A category, is going to put you in the best position in terms of debt affordability and debt capacity, because it's gonna provide you the lowest cost of capital, the lowest borrowing rates. So again, that's why we talk about rating agencies, policies, ratios. You're not rated now, we understand that, but in time, we will evolve there, and we wanna make sure we maximize that process.
You were rated in the past, but you have to take that to the menu.
Okay? So let's talk about existing tax-supported debt on page seven. What you see on the left is total debt outstanding, that's principal, is 21.9 million. Seven point nine of that related to county projects, and thirteen point nine related to school projects. You can see graphically how the debt pays out through the final maturity of 2026. Everything that you have is fixed rate, we know exactly what your, your debt service is every year going forward. And you can see that here in the table on the right, how that 21.9 million pays out over time. This is the interest. There's no interest here on the long end. These are those QSCAPs that we did a few years back, the fifteen million to qualify school construction bonds. Total fiscal year debt service. On the far right here is a column headed ten-year payout ratio. That's the first of these key ratios we wanna talk about. And what that measures is in the next ten years. It's a forward-looking ratio. In the next ten years, how much of that principal, how much of that 21.9 million do you retire? It's a measure that's trying to get to, are you backloading your debt? Are you paying it off rapidly? And absent any new debt, you all currently will pay off eighty-five percent of your existing debt in the next ten years. Higher is generally better, and that's a very good number. You'll, you'll see that in a moment. Here's the first ratio, excuse me, the first comparative. So we're still talking about that ten-year payout ratio. Eighty-five percent of your existing debt will be paid off in the next ten years. The county does have a policy that says you will never get below fifty percent payout. And when you look at the comparison on the right, Wayne County's at the top. And then we have the six different peer groups that we talked about, national counties, triple, double, single A, and North Carolina counties, triple, double, single A. All the peer comps are gonna be set up the same, same way. And so what you see is you compare very favorably across the board on this ratio. You have a very high payout ratio, your existing debt is being retired rapidly, and that's a credit positive. It's also gonna be very helpful as you move forward in terms of debt affordability. So that's, that's, that's a net positive. The next key ratio is debt per capita, so the amount of debt outstanding on a per-person basis. It's currently about a hundred and seventy-five dollars per person. You can see it's declining over time because you're paying your debt down. Remember, we're just talking about existing debt right now. We have assumed a one percent growth rate for population. Over the last five and ten years, you've been between one and two percent. The county does have a policy that debt per capita will not go above a thousand dollars. So you are well below it today. This is an example of where you could say, we have capacity within this ratio, we have capacity within this policy to take on additional debt or to consider taking on additional debt. Doesn't mean it's affordable necessarily, but the capacity is there. And then again, on the comparative basis, Wayne County at the top, very favorable, lower is generally better, and you are below all those, all six of those rating medians. Debt to assess value, another key ratio, that's measuring the amount of debt outstanding as a percentage of your tax base. You have a policy that says it will not exceed two percent. You are currently at basically one-quarter of one percent, point-two-eight percent. We've assumed your tax base will grow about one percent a year. Historically, it's been in the four to five percent range. Over the last several years, that captures a revaluation. So here again, given where your ratio is and where your policy is, you've got capacity. There is room within that ratio, room within that policy, to consider taking on additional debt. And you can see that, again, clearly here with the peer comps, you have room to wrap, to increase that, that ratio, that percentage, and still compare favorably to these peer groups. Finally, debt service versus expenditure. So the amount of debt service in any given year as a percent of your budget. You've got a policy that says it will not exceed twelve percent. You're currently about two and a half percent. We are assuming a growth rate in your budget of two and a half percent. Here again, capacity exists, and you're, you compare very favorably today, given where your ratio falls, and you have room within this ratio were it to increase, and still compare favorably to these rating medians. And then finally, on existing debt, just trying to capture for everybody an idea of your existing debt payments every year, every fiscal year, and what sort of decline in annual payments do you have. And what you'll see is, over here on the far right, cumulative decline, beginning in fiscal fifteen, that's the next fiscal year we'll be in. If we use fiscal fourteen as the base year, you'll free up about forty-eight thousand dollars in the budget. The next year, it would grow to ninety-nine thousand, one forty-eight, three ninety-four, and so on. The idea here is, although in the early years, it's fairly modest, those are dollars that could be redeployed for the capital projects that we're talking about. Okay, so that is, that's it on the existing debt. Are there any questions on any of the existing debt discussions or the ratios?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When you were talking about the tax-supported debt.
Yes.
Okay, now I realize that the county is ultimately responsible for any debt that's incurred by the School Board, even if we're actually making payments on it ourselves. But my question is, is, is that when you're talking about tax-supported debt, and the debt that we have on the current school, it's about a little over a million dollars a year, it's paid for with lottery dollars? So that is not being supported by ad valorem tax dollars? Now, how does that figure into your calculation?
All of that debt is in these charts, and it would be, from a credit analysis, all of that debt would be included in these ratios irrespective of where the dollars are coming from, whether it's ad valorem or lottery. All of that debt is in here, but it's perfect entree to page thirteen. This is where we itemize, where are the dollars coming from for, for the debt service? So let's walk through this. I think it'll, I think it'll answer your question. And it's, I'm on page thirteen, key funding assumptions. Some of you, particularly the Board of Commissioners, will remember, there is, the county does have a policy that says on an annual basis, they will dedicate twelve percent of their budget towards capital and debt service. Based on the revised budget as of, I think it was September thirteenth, the general fund budget was ninety-four point nine million. Twelve percent of that is eleven point three billion. So as per the policy, as per the process in the past, that's the number that the county would choose or strive to commit for capital and debt service. So let's talk about how you get to that eleven point three million. And there are two primary sources that have been identified at this point. The first being a general fund appropriation from current year revenues, whatever those revenues might be. And in the current fiscal year fourteen budget, that number is seven point three million. We also know that lottery monies are available every year, and the number that we've got plugged in for that is just over a million dollars. So between those two sources of funding, we have identified eight point three eight million as available for debt service and capital. The policy states eleven point three will be made available. We've got eight point three, so the upshot is we're about three million short of that twelve percent funding target. Okay? Is that clear? So let's talk about, that's, that's source number one, if you will. It's the eight point three million, which is made up of a county appropriation, current year revenues, and lottery funds. We also have identified, and you all practice in your budgets, dedicated for schools, restricted sales tax at just under four million dollars. The schools have also, that's, that's current year dollars, those are annual dollars. The schools also have a number of one-time reserves that have been accumulated over time. We've listed all of those out. They are available for school capital or for school debt service. So we've got a sales tax fund of ten point two million, capital projects fund of eight hundred thousand, maintenance fund, two point six, QSCAP project fund, about four hundred thousand. So when you add all of those dollars together, you're at fourteen point two million. That's accumulated. That is money that's there, it's not annual. And then you've also got accumulated lottery monies of a little over six billion. So when you look at one-time dollars that have been accumulated over the years, specific to school capital and debt service, it's a little over twenty million dollars. Okay? So annually, the schools have the lottery money, which is, together with the general fund appropriation, is how we try to fund the twelve percent. There's also the restricted sales tax monies that are available annually. And then the schools have roughly twenty point three million of accumulated funds. The county also has accumulated funds, or restricted reserves of three and a half million. Prelimarily, that's been identified for use in the Mount Olive Library. Lee's gonna talk about that in just a moment. But that is county money that is set aside, it's there, separate and apart from any of these dollars. And then finally, if it were to be moved forward and voted, we will incorporate into some of our analyses, the new tax revenue associated with a quarter cent sales tax, which is a little over two point two million. For the purposes of the analyses that we're gonna go through, we assume that, obviously it has to be voted, but that it won't be available until fiscal seventeen, really into fiscal eighteen, for a full contribution. So this is a very key page. It lays out a lot of the basic assumptions about where the dollars are coming from, one-time dollars and annual dollars. And we've, we've been through this, we've scrubbed this a number of different ways with staff, so we feel very good about it. But at the same time, there may well be questions, and we'll be happy to try to answer them if there are. Yes, sir.
You are listing under general fund appropriation of the county's seven point three million, and referring back to the twelve percent requirement. Yet on a preceding page, the twelve percent was for debt service only. So are you including in the seven point three capital expenditures?
Yeah, it's for debt service and PEGO.
So it's PEGO and?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
In the seven point three. Have you got a breakdown on that seven point three?
I've provided it.
You did?
It's, it's the capital that's in our current budget.
Yeah, it's actually in the budget. That was approved along with the debt. But we can, I mean, we can break that.
Well, that'd be a, that'd be a good bit of PEGO there.
Yeah.
Because our expenditure on, on borrowing, let me back up here, is, excuse me, I'll probably, right, you can help.
Yeah, the.
But actually, we're paying two point five million in payments. Is that correct?
Two point six right here in fiscal fourteen. Yes, sir.
And then the schools have, this year, it's two, two million for capital, and then the remainder would be.
And it's all your debt service?
And it's all your debt service, and then county projects.
Okay.
That would be all of them, right at seven million?
Okay.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Down on the bottom of fourteen, is that an additional portion of sales tax?
Yes, this would be new to anything you have.
It's chosen. We just did, because it's, some have asked, what would that be? It's gonna ask by School Board members, County Commissioners. So we have it as an option, but we have it also without.
The state giving us permission?
Yes. Well, the Board has to act on it, Commissioners.
And you have a distinct, there's government's vote, okay?
Yes.
People have to vote.
And they have to vote on it, has to go, uh, refer.
Okay, but that's separate from what we've, okay?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, question. The QSCAP balance that you're showing up there, which is on the question, has been depleted, but you cannot use that money for any project, is my understanding that still doesn't matter for more than an Easter month?
Yeah, I don't know exactly. The balance was as of about three weeks ago or so.
I thought you were using county money now to each of the projects.
The QSCAP, the three hundred ninety-eight thousand is the local funds that are left in it. They're supporting those two projects with lottery funds and local funds. Local funds were made of county funds and local funds that were supported through the other school, or through a school fund. And I had received notice from the schools that those projects were complete, so that is the balance that's left without funding.
But it's not, it's not truly QSCAP dollars.
No, it's a QSCAP fund. It's a project fund, not QSCAP dollars. QSCAP dollars have been used. Those requirements have been met.
Okay, so we tried to cover it all.
Excuse me. So am I understanding that the three hundred ninety-eight thousand could be used for other projects?
Yes.
Yes. It's local money, local control.
Okay.
Okay.
One question.
Yes.
Are any of these funds here under one-time revenue sources unrestricted other than the three ninety-eight, four sixty-eight? Are all of them restricted?
At this point, I would call them all restricted, because they are actually restricted for schools at this point in time, in restricted school funds.
The state would classify those as restricted, for schools.
And my traditional two million dollars that I draw is accounted for in the seven million, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Which is our.
I know we're a little bit different, but. I know we're a little bit different, but I'm towards.
Which is out of the three point nine.
Okay.
The school capital maintenance fund, is that, how's that restricted? The two point six million?
As a carryover project that I'll give a hand on what's completed and what's not. It could actually go back, it would be restricted from the school, because that's actually my sales tax dollars that I draw down.
It goes into that fund balance.
The source of those funds is sales tax, so they are restricted.
Thank you.
And they do a good job tracking.
Okay. So now we're going to transition into the current version of the capital improvement plan. It's going to cover fiscal years fourteen through twenty-three. Lee's going to give you some detail on this, but let me just get you oriented to the page. The top half of the page shows the projects, the uses of the funds. And you'll see from fiscal fourteen all the way out to twenty-three, the grand total is two hundred and twenty-three, almost two hundred and twenty-four million. We've got, it's summed up here at the bottom by fiscal year. So that is the sort, the uses of funds, the identified needs. And there is, sort of here on lines twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, there is the general category of PEGO, pay-as-you-go capital for the community college, the schools, and the general government. We'll get into the detail of that. The middle of the page is where we've identified potential debt issuances to support the capital project. And you'll see over the same timeframe, the potential debt is about a hundred and forty-four million, leaving other sources of funding, grants, cash, equal to about seventy-nine million. So total needs, two twenty-three. Funded by debt, one forty-four. Other sources of funding, seventy-nine. So two twenty-three matches two twenty-three, and it will match every fiscal year between uses and sources.
Real quickly, when you look at this, and I know we're trying to get ten years in, but what we have done, first of all, the county commissioners did adopt a capital plan, and what we have done is taken those, laid these out in certain fiscal years. For instance, you'll see at the top, three point five million Mount Olive Library. You'll see the next project, which is some renovations to DSS, but mainly health department. You will see at this point in time, and there's some unknowns here because of future revenue sources. Detention center at four million in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Day reporting, one point four million sixteen, seventeen. Regional agricultural center, twelve point two million in sixteen, seventeen. You begin to see some possible EMS upgrades for five years, which has been discussed based on some movement and trends within the county of EMS needs. The next, you will see number ten, which is consolidated E nine-one data center for the county. This is two point three million. You'll see airport, this is a jet port hangar at eight hundred thousand in sixteen, seventeen. Then you get down to runway extension, eight point five million in nineteen, twenty. And for the commissioners, that will, you'll see later on, that's grant money, because we have, for the most part, made the math. So I think we'll be good there as you move forward that. Next, you get into Wayne Community College. Now, this is the year that we have incorporated much more information. Wayne, the chairman of Facilities Committee, Mr. Mayo, called a meeting of the Facilities Committee of Wayne Community College. We had a great meeting. Don Lagoon and Kay Albertson have been wonderful to work with. And we have really narrowed down their projects, when they need them, and also their operational costs, and we'll get into that in some of the later analysis. But on Wayne Community College, you see projects starting in fifteen, sixteen, which is the, some parking lots and energy plant. Then you see some projects that start at twenty million, six eighty-two, which is the Holly Building, it's a renovation and addition. I have to forget my notes, I'm going to lose track here. Four million in nineteen, twenty, which is the hook-up additions and renovations. And then in twenty-one, twenty-two, seventeen point three million is the Pine Building addition and renovation. It's actual additional square footage, so we do have additional operational costs as years move forward. Then we have listed number fourteen, central attendance at one point eight million. These were updated earlier. Spring Creek Elementary, which we, was discussed at the last meeting, of approximately three point eight million. Charles V A C O, that's six point six million. And we have these listed under the year we're in, okay, at this point in time. Then you move to fourteen, fifteen, on line eighteen, New Spring Creek and Granton, of thirty-five point two million. We have included, I know there are possibilities of onsite septic treatment, but what we've tried to do with this plan is give you a worst-case scenario of potential cost. If you cannot do that, or if there was a problem, or if you chose to put the sewer in, I've had Mount Olive update the numbers, the new number for the Granton, pressurized line to the Granton site to the existing school site. Actually, the elementary school where it is today would be three point nine million. Number twenty, new elementary and middle northern end schools, twenty-nine point six million. And then you get, as Ted broke out, we have not in the past included the Wayne Community College PEGO, though it has always been included in our budget. We just have it listed here, but we thought it's more appropriate to list it in total. Pay-as-you-go for the schools, and then general PEGO for the county. And then we do have escalators in those moving forward. We had to make some assumptions moving, moving forward. And then Ted will go into some of the issues as it relates to debt as we move forward. And we also will incorporate later the analysis, the operational costs that have been shared with us by the schoolers, community colleges, and county facilities committee. And we'll give you the analysis and the breakdown of that. Questions? But we try to use your timelines and.
This sewer line, the fourth main, is that the, you say that's the route going from Granton to Mount Olive?
Yes.
Okay. And then that's just to the existing site and not on up to the new site as well?
It goes by the new site. It goes by the new site all the way to the existing school.
It's going down there to, to Marmack and then?
Well, not good to Marmack.
I mean, it's going toward Marmack, I'm saying. Because don't go past the new school, don't go.
It actually comes.
Go to both schools, in other words?
It actually comes the back way. We found a cheaper way to do it. So I mean, that was, one of the preliminary engineer reports showed coming off that back road, that there were some, I don't know all the reasons why, but the engineer looked at that, that it comes past that site and then goes to the existing site. That can be manipulated and changed. We had to run across the school.
So anyways, you covered both schools, in other words.
It would cover both of those school sites.
I have a question on the Charles V A C O. Is that, is that a good figure? Because I had heard that that figure may be higher than the six point six, but is it, do we know exactly?
I understand with the schools and you guys, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this is, in your opinion, of adding classrooms, kind of the worst-case scenario, obviously hoping that will come in lower. We don't want to put in five in and it come in at five point nine, but this is the number. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Well, if you recall, when Mr. Height made his presentation the last time, his figure was twelve million.
Yeah.
Not all off our feet. But in conversation with him, he was planning for science classrooms. We were just doing traditional classrooms. A science classroom is almost twice as expensive to do as a traditional. So we're hoping this is a good number.
Okay, we're in the ballpark, right? We're not, we're not doubled from what Mr. Height was telling us.
We hope not.
Okay.
That's not, that's not our intent.
Okay.
And we're trying to use the, Dr. Taylor and Ms. Barkley brought to us, I think what has been approved by the school board as far in your Facilities Committee. I'm not sure what committee it's called. And we're trying to use those numbers, but.
I have a question. On the debt, there are a hundred and forty-four million dollars in debt in twenty twenty-three, I think it was. Does that reflect on the debt service along that time? Because it appears it's just a total debt number, but the debt would normally be being retired as you go.
That's, this is just simply saying when and how much each debt issuance would be. So it's principal. We're going to get to a chart here in a moment that shows the debt service for each year attributable to all of that debt. So the point here is, over the next nine, ten years, if everything were to play out as per this capital program, we would expect the county to issue a hundred and forty-four million dollars worth of debt. And then you'll, as I said here in a moment, you'll see what that correlates to in terms of annual payments.
Yeah, a question specific about projects. They're pretty much what have been laid out by all three county, Wayne Community College, and school facilities committees, and approved by the board. And we've incorporated those exactly.
And I will also add, when we look at total needs over this period of two hundred and some million, the fact that eighty million of that is being paid for with non-debt sources of funding is a real strength. There's a very nice balance there between cash or PEGO versus debt. There's not an over-reliance on debt. It is a lot of debt that we're looking at here over the next ten years, but there is a very solid balance between debt and equity, which creates great opportunities, in our opinion, for the county and will only help to maximize the ratings, the interest rates, and what have you.
How's this tie in with the twenty million dollars on page seven, as far as?
He's going to, that's coming up in future pages, and they'll refer back to that. You'll see how it's incorporated into the payments and into cash. You'll get that.
Yeah, so this, this is where all the dollars are coming from in terms of annual and one-time monies. This is the capital program that we need to address, and now we're going to jump into that on page sixteen. And what page sixteen lays out for you is our key assumptions for the debt, that hundred and forty-four billion. We're setting up the debt issued on an as-heated basis. So essentially saying, look, we need a debt issuance here, one here, one here, almost every year. And by and large, you're only going to be able to issue debt as each project comes together in terms of bidding and permits. The local government commission, no matter what way you go through the financing, which we're going to touch on at the end of the book, you really can't enter into that debt or that lease or whatever it might be until the project is designed and permitted. So the expectation is the county, for various projects, will be entering the debt markets or entering into long-term financing of some sort on an annual basis. And these are our basic assumptions. The debt would be issued on a level principal basis. What that means is every year, the principal payment is the same. The interest component to the payment is higher in the early years, and it declines over time. It's sort of your most conservative approach to issuing debt. Local government commission kind of favors that structure rather than backloading the debt. So one thing I can tell you, when the time comes to talk to the local government commission, setting up the capital plan in this way should meet with their favor. Twenty-year term on all the debt, a five percent interest rate, which is above the current market. We've assumed for the time being in this analysis that all of these projects are eligible to be financed on a tax-exempt basis. That's how you would normally fund your capital projects, on a tax-exempt basis, not taxable, five percent. Your first interest payment is due in the year, the fiscal year that we issue the debt. Your first principal payment is due in the fiscal year we issue the debt. So very conservative approach to structuring the debt. The county borrowings by fiscal year, you can see they add up to sixty-nine million of principal. That's just the debt issuance, the par amount. Over the term of that debt, principal and interest repayment would be a hundred and five million. So the hundred and five million includes interest. And then we've done the same thing for schools. So over the CIP horizon, seventy-five million dollars worth of debt. Total payback, principal and interest on the school is about a hundred and fourteen million. So it's very well matched, for whatever that's worth, between the two major components, county and schools. And you can see graphically how your debt profile would change. This bottom dark blue is your existing debt. And then we add in, in the lighter green, the county debt as it comes on over time, over these many fiscal years. And then the school debt as it comes in over time, over those fiscal years. And you can see every year, for the most part, your annual payments are stepping up. Remember, right now, you're paying about two point six million dollars in debt service. As this new debt, as this new hundred and forty-four million dollars of debt comes on over the next several years, your annual payments are going to step up to a peak of about fourteen million dollars a year. Okay, so that's what we're going to start focusing in on in terms of affordability. How do you afford those annual step-ups in debt service? Where are the revenues and resources coming from to continue to make those payments or to make those payments? Okay? Yes, sir.
If we can let out this, you know, I know you don't have personal, different outside of your property, right?
Well, here's exactly, this is, this is one of those things that we've talked a lot about so far, is those peer comps and your policies and the ratios. So what we've done, beginning on seventeen, is that, well, let's look back at your ratios and your policies and see how those would change if you went forward and funded that CIP. So what you'll see on debt per capital, your policy, if you remember, is a thousand dollars per person. You're at a hundred and seventy-five. If you went forward with this plan, out in fiscal year twenty-two, that ratio would be eight hundred and seventy-two. Clearly, it's gone up significantly. You're still within your policy, and you're still, if you go back and look at those peer comps, you're still in a relative range to the triple-A, double-A, single-A counties. So our point in presenting this is to say, we think this is a doable plan from a debt capacity perspective. The question becomes making sure that everybody is on board with the repayment of that debt. What has to happen, the affordability of it? The ratios you'll see all maintain themselves at an acceptable level of debt to assessed value. If you were to move forward and fund this capital program, your debt to assessed value ratio goes from point three seven percent to approximately one point four percent. Still nicely below your policy, and that would still compare well to the rating agency peers. Debt service versus expenditures on eighteen. This one gets pretty close to your policy, but it's still in compliance. It's up close to twelve percent. And you'll see that, you know, you're still within tolerance. You're still within tolerance of the policy. You would still compare well on the rating tier group. And then you'll see also that your payout ratio, remember, that was currently at like eighty-some percent in fiscal fourteen and goes to seventy-seven percent with the CIP. And out in twenty fifteen, it would hit a low of sixty percent. Still above your fifty percent policy, so still in compliance there. Still comparative to the rating medians, still works just fine. So for that entire CIP and a hundred and forty-four million dollars worth of potential debt, all of your policies could still be net, you'd still be in compliance, and your comparison to the peer comps should track just fine. So the capacity issue, hopefully, we give you some good perspective and comfort on that. And now what we're trying to address is the affordability. And I'm pretty certain you're going to have to look at your book. And I'll walk through this, it's.
Well, hand out magnifying glasses. Also, this is a lot of information.
It's a little more intimidating than it really is. Let me walk through this page from left to right. This is a scenario where we are ignoring the quarter cent sales tax, so don't worry yourselves about that. This entire page is set up on a fiscal year basis, fiscal thirteen through forty-one. Column B is your existing debt. That's the debt you've got in place today. We know it, we know it to the penny every fiscal year, that twenty-some million. Column C is the debt service. So it's the annual payment, principal and interest, associated with the hundred and forty-four million dollars of debt that we've identified. And you can see it steps up over time as we get out further into the CIP horizon, and we're issuing more of that debt. And it hits a peak out there around twenty twenty-two at twelve point eight million dollars. So existing debt, and this would be the new debt associated with the capital plan. The next column D is the annual PEGO for general government. And Lee went through that back on page 13. We're growing that essentially at about 1.5% a year. Column E is the annual PEGO for the community college. Column F is the annual PEGO for the schools. G is other PEGO, I think that was tied to some brand matches.
Yes.
Lee on either the Yax Center or the airport.
That's correct.
And so H becomes the total cash outlay by fiscal year that you, you know, that we would project based on this capital plan. And again, existing debt, new debt, and all four categories of pay-as-you-go by fiscal year. H becomes your future payment for this capital program, both debt service and pay-as-you-go. The middle of the page identifies the annual sources of funding, the ongoing sources of funding. Remember, I said there was a general fund budget appropriation of 7.3 million? We've shown that being available every year with about a 1.5% growth rate. The restricted sales tax is an annual amount of 3.9 million. We've held that flat for the time being. We've got lottery at a million, a little over a million. We've held that flat for the time being. We've got a placeholder for the quarter cent sales tax, we'll look at that in a moment. So M, column M, just simply is adding up I, J, and K. And then what we've got over here is a comparison, looking at H, which is the payments due by fiscal year, compared to M, which is the revenues available. And in N, as in Nancy, you're either positive or you're negative. And you'll see here for several years, column N is bracketed, meaning you've got to come up with additional dollars to balance this out. These sources of funding are not adequate to pay for these payments. So what we've got is two primary sources of funding. We've got, I'm going to look at P. We've got some of these revenues that have been built up over time, these reserves. Some of them for county, the 3.5 million for the library, and then the 20-some million that the schools have accumulated over time. And we're not co-mingling those dollars, meaning that the 20 million of accumulated reserves for the schools are only being used to offset the school because they are restricted. And the county dollars are being used strictly for county projects. But essentially, what we're showing is in P, the use of those funds. They're basically being used over the next several years. And then you'll see that once those dollars are gone, we have, we still have the need for additional revenues. The current year revenues projected out plus those reserves aren't adequate. And so what we've identified in column R is the equivalent number of pennies needed on the county's tax rate to fill the gap. Keep in mind right now that every penny generates about $740,000 of revenue for the county. We're assuming that that grows at 1% a year. So essentially, what we're saying is between ongoing revenues, the use of those one-time accumulated dollars, we still have the need over the next several years for the equivalent of just over 10 pennies on the tax rate to balance this out. And that is for both school and, both for school and county capital, just the capital. Remember, all we're measuring here is existing debt, new debt, and PEGO. Okay, so using those reserves, the school reserves are used for school projects, the county reserves are used for county projects, they're not mixed. You've come up with a shortfall equivalent to roughly 10 pennies over, I guess that's fiscal '18 through '41. And remember, the CIP covers out to 2023. So it should be the, you know, the, all of the county projects and school projects out over that period of time. Beyond 2022, you start to free up some dollars because the debt service then starts to decline again. And that's where either the tax rate could be adjusted downward or that's where your next phase of capital is going to lay in right behind this phase.
Let me ask you a question very quickly. Are you calculating interest on investments or monies that we're holding now into this scenario?
Not right now. It's, I mean, today is...
I mean, we don't know what the interest rate's going to be 10 years from now. But I'm just saying, you know, all of these figures can alter quite a bit based on the interest that we're getting on the monies and the reserves that we're holding, correct?
Yeah, I mean, today, the 20-some million is probably earning, you know, less than 25 basis points, and that would be pretty generous. So we have not included anything in there now. If interest rates go up, that would only be helpful to this picture. But remember, under this current scenario, the reserves aren't held all that long. We're using those reserves upfront to try to shave these peaks in that service.
And also your interest that you can pay on this would put off a bit of the...
We've assumed a 5% borrowing rate. If rates start to trend up, you might be getting more on your interest earnings on your reserves. You could potentially also be paying more for your debt. So it's, it's a little bit of a trade-off. We've tried to be conservative. We have not included interest earnings on reserves. We've used the 5% interest rate. And so, you know, as this is updated and amended over time, if we find that we've got an opportunity to include some earnings on these dollars, all the better, we can include that.
I have a question. You confused me about that on 10 cents on the tax rate. I see there's three years where the tax rate doesn't cover, but all the rest of those years, a period it does cover.
Yeah, Q.
Column number R.
Really, yeah, Q is, column Q is really the column where you've got to look and see, okay, are we net positive on an adjusted basis or not? And so in Q, in fiscal year '18, we have a shortfall of 2.9 million.
But there's only three years there is a shortfall.
That's right, and that's where I said...
The rest of them, there's a shortfall.
Well, if the rate continues, you know, if the rate is going to stay.
Yeah, they, these are not, these are dollars needed every year. They aren't one-time plugs. But you are right, in column Q, we do start to go positive. Remember, O is where the new tax revenue comes in from these adjustments. And so when you get over here to column Q in fiscal '22, you're positive every year. That's the point where you could choose to reduce the tax rate, or that's also the point where the next CIP is going to pick up. So, you know, we could, we could technically show, hey, we've got the ability to show a reduction in the tax rate here. So you're absolutely right, up until right here, 2021, we're short. But then if all of these things happen and these new tax revenues flow through, you do have some additional dollars freed up, which will allow you to, you know, make some decisions about the tax rate. Now, keep in mind, this is just capital, this has nothing to do with the county's operating budget, the school's operating budget.
But now I did understand you say that this is not, there's no current dollars that we have in the fund balance apply to any of this, right?
Yes, you, we are using your 23 million, excuse me, 20.3. We're going to use all of these school reserves and the county reserve right here. We're using that. We're tracking those dollars over here, and we're using it over the course of about six or seven years to help make this a little more affordable, to help offset or delay this impact of taxes. An alternative approach would be you spend that money upfront and issue less debt for some of your early projects, if that were something that you wanted to consider. You, you don't have to hold on to those reserves, I think. I don't know all the ins and outs of the restrictions. But you could choose to spend that 20 million upfront and avoid issuing debt for a certain project or a few projects, and that would just look very different. The debt service over here would be less because you issued less debt, but you wouldn't have these reserves to use for the first several years, which is basically allowing the pushing off of an impact. Those are two very different approaches. In this case, we've assumed you've issued the debt for the project, you hold on to the cash, and you use the cash over the first several years to try to balance out this capital plan.
But the tax rate would probably be...
Tax rate would probably be up here, would be sooner.
Would be sooner and maybe even higher.
That's right. But, but we are absolutely using the accumulated reserves. We're using that right here in column P for both the accumulated school and county monies.
Excuse me, am I understanding that in the year 2018, there would require an estimated tax increase of 3.8 cents?
Yes, that's 3.8 pennies on the tax rate, and that's in fiscal '18.
All right, the following year, you're showing no increase.
You leave the 3.8, it assumes that tax rate increase is left in place for the entire period.
It carries forward.
So you're saying 3.8 for that year, but that stays in place for the balance.
Correct. And 10 years later, you have that another time.
And you have got another tax increase.
When you add to that, you would have a 10 cent tax increase for all the years.
So you're saying 2022. 2022, you can flip it, and then you begin to go in a different position where you then at 1.9. You could do, you know, if things, if things were the same, at 7, you could, it's about 2.5 cent reduction. So you would then possibly have to take that 10.2 down to 7, 8 cent. See what I'm saying?
If no projects, if no projects were added.
Well, that's why I'm not quite understanding, because you're showing 3.8 cents increase to offset the deficit of 2.9 million.
Correct.
The following year, you've got a 1.9 million dollar surplus.
Okay, go and look.
So why would you not be able to reduce your taxes back on that following year? I don't understand that.
No, the three, yeah, the 3.8 pennies is offsetting what's first in column N, a 5.9 million dollar deficit.
Yes.
But then you're using 3 million of reserves.
Correct.
That's tied to the school money.
Right.
And so your debt deficit is 2.9 million, which is equivalent to 3.8 pennies.
Okay.
You put that 3.8 penny increase in place, and that's the new revenue that shows up in column O. That's new tax revenue for the tax adjustment. So in, in that fiscal year, which is fiscal year '19, you have a 3.4 million dollar deficit in N. You've got new tax revenue coming in.
Okay.
You've got capital reserves, monies being used, and you do end up with a million nine. Now, part of that is because we are combining here county and schools.
Yes.
The schools have significantly more reserves to use that we cannot use to offset county projects. So what might be driving the tax increase in that year could be a county project, not a school project.
Yes, or a community college project.
Or a community college project.
Okay, okay, I understand.
And a couple of these big hits are community college projects.
So, you know, it, it does get a little confusing, but that's the primary difference or the key that is somewhat hard to see is those reserves aren't used on a county-wide basis. Those reserves have to be used specific to schools or counties.
So from the year 2022, the 10.2 cent tax rate is going to be from year 2022 continuously unless it's changed. It's going to be 10.26, added to our existing tax rate.
Yeah, and you can see you're building reserves, there's opportunities to start reducing.
You could, instead of building at that rate, you could reduce that growth and say, okay, instead of building at X percent, we're going to shift that back over here and shave off that capital or that debt payment. So we'll say, we're going to agree that we're only going to put this much aside, and then you're able to bring that back. But right now, we're assuming you build the reserves, try to get back the costs. The one thing that's very important is when you get to the end of this 10 years, I know that my superintendent has a 20-year plan, he's got another 10 years behind that. How are we going to pay for those? And we're looking, okay, do we need to start building for that next car payment? And that's part of what we were looking at.
Yeah, column Q is the, is the column where you would say, beginning in 2022, you go positive by a million nine. And that's where you could reduce the tax rate if you chose to make that zero. And as Lee said, that's probably 2 to 2.5 cents out there. And at this point, we've just left it in place, but you will certainly have some opportunities to reassess that as we go forward.
But we would have the opportunity, rather than doing absorb taxes to export the sales taxes.
And we're just going to show you the next option.
Perfect, the perfect segue to page 20, the only thing that's, well, you know what?
Let's back up.
I need to back up to the...
We need to look at the very end, and I want to explain something real quick. We added this, this year for the first time, I have added in general, but I've got a lot of detail from the school system, which I greatly appreciate their time, Wayne Community College and our County Facilities Committee. On T, U, and V, you will see increased operating costs from all projects. And you see that in the very first year, 50,000. And I've got the outline of what that is, for instance, that's amount of library, then like health and DSS, Ag Center, but you have schools. And you will see those years, and I have talked with Don McGoon and McMahon and Steve, and we have all agreed that these were correct numbers. And these are the operating impacts to the county budget. So when you look at an increase, I've got the 10 over here, I've got to look at this 17.3 cent because I've got to figure out, I'm not, I'm just dealing with debt on this side. I got to figure out how to do the annual budget. And that's, that is, that's oil and gas and tires, okay? So we want to make sure, full disclosure to the public, of what it's really going to cost other than debt because that doesn't go down, that goes up. And we have put an escalator in there, 1.5% on, I think, or, was that correct? Was it 1.5% on our operation?
I think that's right.
Yeah, 1.5% just as a what-if, and energy's going up, fuels, you know.
And Lee, these are the operating impacts just associated with the capital plan.
That's right.
So anything else that is existing in the county...
That has nothing to do with the DSS budget, health budget, or the school's annual operating budget other than these new projects. So on existing, man, 18 million, give or take. That's, right now, I'm assuming it's the same. It probably will not be. So as that grows, that will impact. DSS will impact, Rister D's, Sheriff's Office, that impacts. This is in addition to those things.
Question, so that means 2018, or the previous page, would add another 4.4 of that?
That's correct.
Okay.
No, it would be 3.8 plus 4.24, these are tenths and hundreds of the pennies.
So your total is over on the end, so you've got your totals on the end, V, okay?
And the column U, for the most part, is tenths of a penny.
Okay, I was on the wrong line.
You know, so except for that one year in '16, that's 2.6 pennies. But every other year is .01 pennies. But D is exactly right. V is the total, we're adding up R plus U to get V. To see not only the capital, but the operating associated with all of these projects. And again, we've just done a simple math all the way down to see how it evolves.
I know that, I know it's a hard argument to make, but at some time, when we're building new structures and everything, if we can build them more energy-efficient and more energy-friendly, is there a possibility we can reduce some of those operating costs?
Can.
That's what I'm hoping.
We've made some assumptions, but we've assumed in the cost from the, from the schools, you have, you know, a fixed cost per square foot in your schools, I think that's how you have looked at it. And we've done something similar. Now, we did on our Ag Center project and a couple of other projects, we looked at energy efficiency because our Facilities Committee could take a look at that. But that, here actually, you can do that. If you look at energy reduction, that will help. But that, your actual, you can do that, if you look at energy reduction, that will help reduce it.
And we did get into a little bit of that discussion on the funding options section that hopefully would be, if it were something that we pursue, would only improve these numbers.
Now, I want to make sure that, that I understand that all, all this is based on if our economy here in Wayne County, our tax revenues and everything stay the same, is that correct?
A 1% growth in your taxes.
1% growth.
Okay. So, so there's a possibility these figures could be, be better or much worse?
It depends on the economy, but we had, we had this kind of take a snapshot and say, you had to set variables and say, if the interest rate was five, if, you know, to have a scenario, because things do this, but they tried to look, Davenport, probably hired them to look at, what has the industry done, that's why we went to 5%. We know it's probably going to be less than that worst-case scenario. And as Ms. Flowers said, if you could do some things to reduce energy costs, find other ways, efficiencies in transportation, whatever, you can incorporate those, it's going to help reduce the burden.
Question, Ted.
Yes, sir.
On the operating cost side, that's including all the projects. Can we break it down from schools versus the county projects?
I have it broken down.
And you said you're looking at a 1.5% increase a year?
That's right.
Is that 1.5% on the school side, or is it on the...
All projects, and just on operating costs.
Just cumulative, is that what you'd say?
Yes. And we looked at it, because we knew we needed to put something in there, because obviously we know costs aren't flat. You know, typically, if you're looking at just the operations of facility, energy costs typically are not flat, fuel are not flat. So we said this is a worst case, and as Ms. Flowers said, if you could get that cost down, instead of it being, maybe we get our growth rate on cost back to a half a percent or something, or zero. You hope you can do that. But we, that is, in my opinion, a worst case based on other counties and cities talking to Davenport and some other folks, so a lot of what you put in there for, just for projection.
And you're right now doing on schools, was 18 million?
It was just over 18.
18.1 is the traditional.
18 million.
For the annual budget.
You got that projected, you've got that projected for how long, at 18 million?
It has an increase, it has, it has an increase in the school.
Yeah, it has, it has, it has an exposure on their annual per per, that's not in there, their annual...
On their capital to me.
Yeah, on the 2B, and it does have that in there on the...
But the 18 million, the op...
But the 18, that, that is not, that is separate from this.
And that is, that is the operation, that's operational cost that the county is giving to schools, 18 million.
Of what they own today.
Yes.
If they renovate it, fix it, or add, or the community college adds, or the county, this is on top of your normal budget as of today.
That, and that tax rate is not applied to the 18 million increase.
Okay, if the schools want in addition to that 18 million for operational cost, how would they go about factoring that into this analysis?
It would be a plus on the end, we would actually add to this, it would be a plus.
Can we do that?
It would be a premium every 700,000 they add.
Can, can we do that?
Sure, I mean, we can, we can do that, yeah, we can look at it.
Okay.
Well, building a school that, if you, let's say we were to build a school at Grantham and renovate the old campus, keep it to a, really not doubling the operating cost because your operating costs are going to go down significantly at the old campus.
Well, I think there was no addition to that facility, the only thing we had was to the new facility.
Your Spring Creek Middle and your Grantham could be close to swapping. There would be some additional, a small amount. The biggest increase will come with your two new middle, two new schools in the northern. There will be some increase for Grantham and Spring Creek Middle, but not to the same rate that the new schools in the northern.
Correct.
Is, is the school board looking at possibly consolidating any school? Because, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll throw that one up, throw the fire block. But from what I'm understanding here, by adding the four additional schools, you're going to have additional operating expenses by operating those additional schools. So my question is, to reduce the impact, are, is there any consideration of possibly some consolidation?
There has not been that discussion at this point.
But you can see how that would dramatically change the outcome.
That's, that's the school board's opinion.
Yes. Robin Hudson on the cover, because he may have... It's been, the story has been consistently, what I hear from my constituents, that they prefer, the county voters who are in the base of all this, that they prefer local, small schools, who just been consistently told that this, that you get a better quality education if you have local, small schools. Now, you know, hypothetically, we can build one huge school in the county and bus all the kids to have one principal and a bunch of assistant principals, and just have one school. But it doesn't seem to be that that's what citizens want. And so that's what I hear along, and I'm hoping that in us building some of these new schools, that we can replace some older, just like we've got a school tonight that's got 40, 50-year-old boiler units on them. I mean, there's much more efficient ways of doing things than some of the schools we're operating right now. I just replaced the air conditioning unit in my house, Jackson's son told me, I was going to save a lot of money. It didn't really feel like it the day I did it, but, you know, I'm hoping everything works out. But it's kind of the same analogy. So that's, that's my, I probably haven't answered your question, but that's my son's son. You know, I feel like I'm a little people, if people want a new school in the neighborhood, then my job is probably to help them get it. And, and we got some kind of, we got some old crowding, and we got some old rundown schools that need to be fixed. And, and I mean, that's just where we're at.
I guess the short answer would be, we're not looking at that right now. We're just trying to find out how we can implement what we've been, you know, what we feel like our needs are right now, what people...
Joe, I will also say that in, I'll give you a good example, like Rosewood Elementary. When we're looking at schools and we're looking at building schools, we're also looking at the possibility of having to increase the size of those schools so that they're being built, so that more classrooms can be added to them
Sure.
without a lot of structural redesign or that type of thing. Rosewood Elementary is a classic example, if you ever go out there and go through on the wing and look to see where there's even stubbing and piping on the end of the building so that if you needed to add three or four more classrooms there because of growth in that particular area, you can do that without having to turn around and build a new school. So, you know, the future growth has been taken into consideration as part of probably what you were saying. Another thing that I mean, I'm sitting here listening to, and we're, we're going to, I want to address this to Lee and the county commissioners. I don't think we're going to have a bypass go around Wayne County or around Goldsboro without us losing some revenue, some tax revenue. Are you calculating that into these figures about a possibility of losing tax revenue when that bypass comes down?
Well, one of the things that's happening right now is there's a economic impact study being done that the Highway 7 Commission has brought in NC DOT. So we're hoping we're going to have some better information by Mr. King December that will help us to look at that, because we don't know, because we feel like there will be this slide and then continue up. You know, when you look at some of the other history, some of the other bypasses in North Carolina and other states, there have been some slides, and in some cases, there were not. But that was when economic times were really turning away.
Right.
So that's something, that, that impact study is going to help us look at. What's, what is it going to mean, is, you know, because we don't know? I mean, it's, it's one of those things, it will grow, but where will it fall back? And if it falls back and revenues go down, then it impacts these lines in the green where it requires increases on the property tax side. So if you're up.
I just, I just think that's something that we need to...
We're waiting for those answers.
Mr. Dr. Doherty responds to second, to your question about consolidating schools. Board, when we developed this plan back in 2000, so looking, oh, certainly they're closing times. Soliding schools, having larger schools, having smaller schools. And what we found with the smaller schools, and Ms. Flowers said that was something that people said that's what we wanted, it also increases student participation, athletics, and clubs, and those kinds of areas. You have less discipline issues. And, and so overall, we think it provides a better education, better services for children. Now, with larger schools, you have the opposite of that. You have more discipline issues, you have less parental involvement, those kinds of things, I think, are negative. So I think, in the way out of positive, and in negative, we felt that even though there is a lot more difference of cost, we felt that the smaller schools were a better way to go than the large schools. So that's sort of where we are, and, and the board is not considered going to mega schools. I mean, everything that we read indicates that mega schools is probably not going to work. You can slice some dollars off of it, but the question...
The one thing we had to talk about in this whole process is the, we're, this $20 million that we have right now, we're, we're losing buying power on that every year. When we just had the facilities, I mean, with some architects, they weren't there predicting 5 or 6% increase in construction costs, and I mean, going up per year. So we're, that's not even keeping up with the, we're just going in the old by, by my business.
That was part of the point of, in talking with Dr. Taylor and Nan and looking at what your, your facilities came up with, we tried to really expedite for '13, '14, and '14, '15 for New Spring Creek, Grantham, and, and then obviously your other three projects, Charles Beak, up Spring Creek, Central Attendants, to get those as quick as possible to do that, because we do have to look at those escalators because things will continue to go up, so we try to get those in as quick as possible.
Okay, I do want to look at page 20. The only thing that's changed here is we filled in potential 4% sales tax in column L. So again, the county board has the ability, if they so choose, to put this to a vote of people, referendum if it were to pass. The current estimate is equivalent, it would be equivalent to about $2.2 million of additional revenue. The timing of it is, we've assumed that it would be laid in those dollars beginning in fiscal 18, and that just comes from some basic assumption that we work through with staff. So you can see the impact of that additional 2.2. Same capital program, all the other sources of funding are the same. We're still using those reserves upfront. We're using them over a longer period of time, because we do have an extra 2.2, 2.2 million available. And the overall impact is reduced by about 3 pennies for capital. The operating does not change. So it improves the picture a little bit. And obviously, this is just a snapshot of a moment in time, you know, as you all move through this, and as we've done in the past, this is at least an annual process, looking at updates, prioritizations, and, you know, current trends in the economy as it relates to these revenue sources. And, you know, the, the plan will be updated as you move forward.
And obviously, part of, you know, we tried, we gave worst-case assumptions in that, and I will give, Mr. Tate, where did I lost me? He was going. On that agricultural center, you know, we looked at it, it's about a 12.2, 12.5 million dollar project. We're assuming the use of cash of just over $2 million from county. $10 million would be debt, because I could, you know, that's worst case. Now, if we're able to get state or federal dollars or something like that, then we're able to, you would see a cutback on the, you know, obviously on the county side for that, because we, we might get 2 or 5 or 10 million dollars, and it's going to help shave this back. So that's, I think it's an encouraging thing to say, we've got to go out and really pump for money. Where are these additional revenues other than from property taxes? Where else can we get money?
I'd like to add something to Ted on Mr. Pridgen's comment about the 70 corridor bypass in Goldsboro. Since '08, '09, we've been looking at sales tax receipts, and it was up in '07 at 8, at just a little over $18 million, sales tax receipts. And 2011, due to the economy, it dropped down to 14 million. So we lost 4 million in, in about three years. 2012, we're at 16 million in sales tax receipts. And we're, finance director, along with the commissioners, show a flat. We're just showing 16 million for, for the coming year. And we're looking at the completion date on 70 being 2015, which will indicate, give us a good year, '15, '16, to see what retail sales are going to do, how that bypass is going to affect the retail sales. So in '17, we have a quarter cent sales tax, just looking at what it would do. But it would give us a year from '15 to the time it opens, from '15 to '16, to give it a good bird's eye view of what the, yeah, what the retail sales would do in relation to the new highway bypass.
Can I ask you something?
Ted, just, you know, just comment on your question on the bypass.
Well, I know it's got effects, because, I mean, there will be somebody who won't stop, they'll stop and catch you and get a barbecue sandwich around the corner, or get a barbecue sandwich. It's called convenience. Excuse me, Eddie, but that's...
But adding, adding, adding to the sales, by adding a tax, a sales tax increase to the retail sales, we really don't even know if a quarter, or a half, or three quarters. You don't know what to tell the people until we really get a good, our arms around what the retail sales are. And if retail sales are the same, then there's no need of adding taxes, because your retail sales are either the same or going to fall.
What I'd like to say is in regards to what Chairman Keen said, he was on Planet East, Mr. Smith was there, and probably several other people in the room. But one of the things that I've heard pretty much across board at Planet East is where the, where the new highways went, that's where you had your growth. And so I'm, I'm hoping to look towards that as maybe a more positive thing. I mean, I'm sure that there might be some individual businesses that might move traffic away from them. But how much are we going to get? I know if you go out in that neighborhood right now and want to buy some land, the landlord's thinking, "Oh, landlord." But anyway, I'm hoping, I'm hoping a real positive.
Well, I know this is a little bit off the path, and our chairman is correct when you look at the estimates of NC DOT based on when they purpose and decided that they would allocate, go get the Garvey bonds, and, and go up the design mill, do what they could have done, and expedited Highway 70. They estimated that what will be the new Business 70 will, that's there now, that by 2030, the traffic has doubled what it is today by 2030 on existing. So that means you're going to have more traffic on the road even with the highway. That, that's, that says obviously it should trend up.
Well, I know it makes it a whole other piece for Newt Go Shaw and Rollin, now a cause of interstate.
Sure.
Lee, just out of curiosity, what kind of, what kind of tax impact did we have off of 795 when it connected up in Wilson County and came down, and go all the way to 40?
We really don't have it, but we, we never noticed anything. The only thing we had on the screen were some big, and some commissioners may remember this some years ago, some big, huge refunds that for proprietary reasons, where not the department revenue won't tell us. We got some hits of a million dollars, I mean, some big hits. But it was, we, we kind of can figure out who they are based on shipping and that type thing. But we got some hits there, but other than that, there really were no blips on the screen from it.
And the timing was in the, was in the economy.
Yeah.
I'm glad we talked about 795 issue starting to go like this. As many of y'all know, I made my living moving freight. 795, if we can get it completed, it's going to have as much or more impact than 70 highway.
That's correct.
I agree, absolutely.
That's correct.
Because, I mean...
It's, one should kind of offset the other if we can get that last leg in there, because it'll bring so much more traffic right through. And that's kind of the hope for the, the push. We got to have an offset.
The growth on 795, if you can ever get it completed, the growth on 795 interchange is, is going to explode.
Ted?
Okay. Well, we want to wrap up with a discussion on options, financing options. And there's a whole host of ways y'all can go about this. And first, we're going to talk about the specific type of debt or funding that you could pursue. And the first being general obligation bonds. Those are required to be approved through a referendum process. They require local government commission approval. Generally speaking, in terms of borrowings, in terms of debt, a general obligation bond is going to give you your lowest cost of capital, your lowest interest rate. As a county, as a city, as a governmental entity, a GO bond is the best credit that you can offer to a lender, because it is backed by the full faith taxing authority of the government, of, of the local government. So it is your lowest cost of capital. By and large, in the capital projects you're looking at... in a, the capital projects you're looking at, uh, as a county, as a school, they should be eligible for tax exempt financing, which is helpful, uh, further. Uh, and again, as I said, it's secured by the taxing power of authorities of, of the county. So you've got to make a decision going forward. Do you want to pursue general obligation bonds? If so, um, you've got to determine when that referendum will take place, uh, develop the specific referendum questions and all of those things. Does it, does it address just school needs? Does it address community college and county needs? Um, so that's, that's option number one. Option number two would be what we call installment purchase financing. Um, it is not subject to referendum. It's not subject to voter approval. It does require LGC approval. Uh, the issuer, typically the county, must hold a public hearing, um, as part of the debt issuance process. The cost of capital is higher than general obligation bonds, not so. Um, it is a pretty common source or use funding source in North Carolina. You can do bank loans through installment purchase contracts, which the county has done before. You can also do public issuance of installment debt, which are oftentimes called certificates of participation, COPS, or limited obligation bonds. Um, the security for that type of debt is typically a mortgage, if you will, on whatever the project is that you're financing. So you give a, a deed of trust or a mortgage on the facility. And the annual debt service payments are subject to board appropriation. So it is not as good a credit from a lender's perspective as a general obligation bond, but it is a very widely accepted and understood form of financing, um, for North Carolina local governments. And so there may be some projects on your CIP that are more conducive to an installment purchase financing. Others you may choose to, uh, put to a referendum. It's not an all or none proposition. You can pick and choose which projects you might want to put on a referendum and which you might want to fund through installment purchase financing. And then finally, sort of a catch-all, quote unquote, lease financings, design, build, or public-private partnerships. Um, you know, this is sort of a catch-all that looks at a lot of different, um, approaches to capital planning, um, depending on the legal structure of, of the, uh, of the project, of the financing, and, and they can get, they come in different, you know, forms. Um, it may require a public hearing, most likely will, will require local government commission approval. So it, I don't think it bypasses those basic approval processes. Typically would, you know, I wouldn't expect it would be subject to a referendum because it wouldn't be a general obligation bond presumably. Um, it may include the use of various tax credit opportunities. Typically, you are partnering up with some, uh, private entity to move whatever project it is forward. Uh, that private entity as the owner or the operator of the facility, um, is in a position to take advantage of tax credits, whether it's new market tax credits or solar tax credits or some other things, which can be helpful to the overall financing. The project ownership may be with a non-governmental entity for some period of time. So it may be that this partner, um, that you would go forward with owns the facility for some period of time, um, so that they can take advantage of these tax credit opportunities that the county would not be able to take advantage of as a, as a, as a local government. There is no incentive for the county to take advantage of tax credit opportunities. So the ownership may have to rest with a non-governmental entity for some period of time. It may ultimately revert back to a more traditional ownership, but at least for some period of time, our understanding is that it may be with a non-county or a non-school entity. The lease payments, um, would likely be treated as debt service payments. So they may technically be lease payments, but from a credit perspective, when people are looking at the county's credit and understanding, like for instance, the debt service as a percent of expenditures, it's a, it may be a lease payment, but it's going to be looked at as the equivalent of a debt service payment when you're talking about credit analysis and rating agency and investor interaction. Um, there has been some new legislation that guides elements of these types of project approaches or financings. And, and one of the key takeaways that we saw in some of that is, at some point, the county will need to adopt written criteria outlining the intended use of these programs, where it would be applicable, where it would not, the benefits that you're looking to achieve by using this type of funding approach. So that's something that, if that is a, um, a possibility, that we would want to get those things in place because rest assured, the local government commission will want to see that as part of the initial discussion concerning design, build, or public par- private partnerships. Um, this is a continuation. Other considerations, um, you know, in looking at GO bonds with traditional ownership, where you design it, you bid it out, and you build it, and you own it and operate it versus leasing or public-private or design-build, you want to consider a number of factors when comparing those big approaches. Not only the project cost, what does it cost to build that facility, doing so on an apples-to-apples basis, or understanding if there are differences, what those differences are in the project costs and why. You want to understand what the cost of the actual transaction is. What does it cost to raise the funds to build this project? What are the financing costs? What are the interest rates or the embedded return within those annual payments, be it debt service or lease? What is it costing us? We used in our analysis five percent a year. Some of these approaches may be higher or lower in interest cost. Doesn't mean it, it doesn't make sense to do, but that's just one component. And then the final is the operating cost. And this gets to something we talked about earlier, is working towards more energy efficient facilities and, and lead certification and, um, more efficient systems generally. And, um, so we want to make sure that we're aware of what the ongoing operating cost of any one of these facilities is when we're comparing these approaches. Again, project cost, transaction costs, financing costs, and operating costs. You want to compare these costs over the expected useful life of the project or the facility, whatever that might be, whether it's a county facility, a community college facility, or a public school facility. And then lastly, um, you know, are there other benefits and risks associated with one approach versus the other? And if you're able to quantify those, you definitely want to, um, the, the structure of certain types of financings bring with them perhaps certain risks or, um, unknowns that are, you know, have to be worked out over time. And our point in saying this is, um, when you're looking at different debt structures or funding options, you want to make sure that you understand, you know, what happens after five years, what happens after seven years, when we need to revert back to, let's say, a more traditional ownership structure under some of these lease, lease projects. Our understanding is, again, that ownership would rest, at least initially in some of these cases, with a non-governmental entity. Not a problem. Uh, it's been done in a few, um, places before, but over the long term of the facility, be it twenty years, thirty years, forty years, does it revert back to a more traditional ownership structure? And how do you affect that change? How do you move from the private ownership to the public ownership? What are the risks and benefits associated with doing that? So, uh, all of this is to say, you've got options, whether they're voted, whether they're not voted, whether it's traditional funding or some, using some of these newer tools. Um, and, and I would say, you know, that's going to be a, a primary focus of discussion on the front end to determine collectively how you all want to choose to move forward with, with some of these projects from a planning perspective or, uh, you know, getting the authorizations in place to, uh, to bid them or enter into agreements. Any questions on that? Yes?
Quick question, uh, regarding the general obligation bonds versus installment purchase financing. Based upon Wayne County's, uh, ratings, what would be approximately the difference in interest rate, one versus the other?
It, it moves around with changes in interest rates generally, but let's say one quarter of one percent. So if you're borrowing at four and a half as a GO, maybe you're borrowing at a four seventy-five as a non.
When we were talking with architects, um, I, we pretty consistently asked them, you know, what did they think that the cost was going up on for new construction? And I, I got some pretty solid numbers of around six percent. I think I was correct. Just borrow around six percent. So the point being is that when we're looking at financing, um, a project, the element of time, when we talk about building a school building, is something that needs, to me, would need to be calculated in because, um, even though one might be a little cheaper, if it's going to take us two years to do it, whereas another we could do right away. If you're looking at six percent, well, on a ten million dollar project, that'd be six hundred more thousand. It'd be a million two hundred in two years. So to me, which one of those would be the best deal? The best deal would be the one, I think, that we could arrange maybe the quickest. And that would make, be something we would look at as well.
That's a good point, absolutely.
Well, and that, that was my point. If it's only a quarter percent and it takes you two years to go through the process, uh, going with a, uh, general obligation bond, don't know that that's a time factor, but let's take that. If that being the case, and it's only a quarter percent difference, then you've got to keep that in, as well as the additional cost of construction.
Plus, you know, I think we could all agree that interest rates are low, but the, the upside trend is more than the downside trend, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, thanks Ted. Uh, we're going to, uh, and I want to thank Bob, Ted, and all the Davenport staff. They have been great. You know, understand, this is a snapshot. As Ed said, this is a working document that we will continue to, uh, kind of mold and put together as the boards see fit. We can do different scenarios, and that's what we plan to do. Uh, Davenport Associates has teamed with us for a number of years now, and been great team members, and we appreciate that. Cam and I, every day, thank goodness for them showing up on our doorstep. So, anyway, um, next, real quickly, I told Pam, she's got, uh, two minutes instead of five. Uh, just real quick on an update on financials, just real quick, and then I want to, Dr. Taylor, to kind of maybe wrap things up on where you guys are on the engineering architectural, because that is really going to drive your ability as two boards to make decisions on what your timeline is on, on getting some of those plans done.
Quickly, I want to go over the cash balances that are in the school funds that are on the county books at this time. Um, first, I want to kind of address the balances that were in there as of June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. Um, sitting within, we have a fund that we have restricted, that the sales taxes put in the school's portion, the thirty-eight sixty percent on Article forty and forty-two. As of June thirtieth, it has ten point two million in it. We are estimating for the thirteen fourteen year, three point nine million dollars coming in. There is a budgeted, um, portion of that for cap, um, school's capital maintenance of two million. If the additional one point nine million that we're anticipating coming in is not appropriated by the schools for another project, the balance estimated for June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen will be twelve point two million. That is all restricted sales tax funds. I did put in here the school's, um, current expense fund, um, because this is the fund that the current expense money is, um, um, about eighteen million that we give y'all a year. Over time, this fund has built up about a half a million dollar, um, fund balance. And that is interest that's been put in there, and it goes back twenty years. So that, that fund does have a fund balance in it. The Wayne County Schools Capital Maintenance Fund has two point six nine four million in it. That is the two million we give you every year. Qualified School Construction Capital Project Fund. That is the money that we borrowed, fifteen million, um, to schools. Um, as we've worked from man, that those schools are complete, we did use all of the fifteen million, um, for those projects. Those projects also have some county, local funds in it and some schools, um, local funds, school restricted funds in it. Uh, the projects are complete, and with the funds that were moved in there to support those projects, there's three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars left in that fund. And then we also have a school capital project fund. These are, um, old projects that you have, still sitting on our books, that have a balance of eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand in it. For a total, as of June thirtieth, cash balance for fifteen point four million, and an estimate on our books of June thirtieth, fourteen, with, if, within projects that are approved at this point, of sixteen point seven million. June thirtieth, fourteen.
Just again, want to give you a snapshot and estimates based on information we know or projects that have been approved. We assume nothing else when we do that. Uh, so that's up to Taylor. If you could kind of give us an update on the architectural engineering side and where you guys are in that recent time line.
For our board, moving that very quickly, uh, we just crossed that border in September seventeen, facilities, we're getting, they're doing eight different architectural funds. And their commission wants to narrow that field to three. They have done that. That was presented to our board last night. In fact, we were hoping by first, it was, to actually interview that three, and then the board will select one of those, um, three of the four. Our plans are to, 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 to select a prototype and replicate that in three different places in the state college. And then we'll have to go to different design options for elementary and school. So I think our board, we're hoping quickly, getting this done. And then once we select an architect, then what we will decide on a design that we want for middle school and elementary school, and then for those other locations that we have to do. And then, uh, I hope you were very quickly, I mean, that, that being the designers.
And I'm assuming, as I said, that includes with, um, Centrals, all those.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Because we have put those, if you look at time constraints, thirteen, fourteen, for the three projects which are kind of minor and major renovations, typically you're adding that CBA cop, and then, uh, trying to get your design and stuff done for two thousand, uh, fourteen, fifteen. Uh, but that's why we've lined those up based on the time, like I talked to, uh, to Dr. Taylor and Spark in the last month, that that was doable, um, you know, based on design work, we could go to the LGC and, uh, begin looking at how we, how we do this. And, um, and then talk about some of the options that Ted's talked about. And all the board members, if you're interested in both the regulations and, you know, you do. Mr. Chairman, that, um, you know, the recommendations basically, um, you've heard really at the end of, of Mr. Paul's report, uh, you know, the board's really getting the engineering done. And once you, you get that done, and you've got been working on these design pieces, then the staff will come back together, generate some reports that go to facilities committees or road departments, and if you decide to do that, then we can come back with some further recommendations on how these things are to be, to be financed or paid for. We hope this was helpful today. We, I appreciate Dr. Taylor and his staff and all of our staff here, and everybody doing really hard before stabbing for it, and the board members and all of your input. And, uh, this is a building of information, and, uh, that's what today was about. Keep everybody on the same playing field, the same information, and let's just work it out.
Thank you. Any comments from members?
Mr. Chairman. I wanted to read this, so there would be no misunderstanding. Uh, I find myself again in a conflicting situation. I must agree with the editor of the News Artist. That is definitely a conflicting situation. I have made a decision based upon incomplete and inaccurate information. Good and sound decisions are based upon good and sound facts and information. We sometimes are tempted to allow our egos and our quest for political reservations to manipulate our actions. This board and all board members rely upon receiving full and accurate information to make sound decisions. As Joe Friday says, just the facts, ma'am. I supported the abandonment of the current campus at Grantham School based upon the information provided. I trusted that information and the source of that information to be complete and accurate. I failed to do my due diligence and verify that information. After receiving a numerous objections from some within the community, I, along with two other commissioners, toured the Grantham School campus. I should have done this prior to making any position on this subject. I should have done this prior to making any position on this subject. I am disappointed and embarrassed with myself that I had made and ever supported the closing of the Grantum School and building two schools to replace the existing campus. The majority of the buildings are in excellent condition in Grantum. That was my error, and I take full responsibility for it. I will work harder to separate facts from opinions and agendas in the future. Now that said, I have withdrawn my support for building the two schools on a common campus in Grantum and support the school board's original plan to build a new middle school in Grantum and a middle school in Spring Creek. The old adage holds true in this case. Those closest to the problem generally have the best solution for the problem.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have one comment. Yes, to get all the information. Our board voted to maintain a reserve in a sales tax money of 4 million dollars. And I know you were using numbers that may have were possibly offending all that money. But anyway, the reason we did that, which Scott and Toby has found on it, if you feel like, the reason we did that was in the event of emergency, because we seen situations where other counties had tornadoes or earthquakes and things, and they got into a real emergency situation and had to have money. So I guess that's restricted funds that are more restricted.
And that's one thing they're talking about now. We tried to incorporate into that, you know, some balances, you know. And then there are times that we use higher use of county funds, school funds. I think Ted or Bob looked at that. I cannot maneuver in our
We spent, we spent those county reserves down to zero. So if you want to maintain 4 million in there, we would just build that in, and it would be additive to the shortfall or to the
Yeah. That's what our
We need to incorporate that in.
Yeah, we spent of county and school reserves down to zero, so we could certainly amend it.
It just pushes
Well, that would increase the tax impact that you
And it may accelerate by a year or something.
And we just have to run the numbers a little bit forward or backwards, you know. And we agree, you have to have something there, you know. So what that is, you guys have to decide. We incorporate it in and see what the impact
Mr. Tim, we've had this conversation before, and it would be simple, easy, included with the spin to zero. You've got to have some amount just for basic emergency, but while we're spending on costs, we still have everything.
That's correct. And obviously, keeping in mind that we had things from the most far on revenue side flat. As you said earlier, there is growth, and we have the ability to grow those.
Yes.
I just want to add a comment on this is the plan and the big list.
This is a working
Yeah, the economy goes, you know, tanks, you know, we're going to have to make some changes if this project's off.
That's correct.
Let's hopefully this is the best case scenario and the worst case scenario in terms of management of the cost. Because I look at 17 cents, whatever it was, that's kind of a sticker shop. But just got to keep in mind that if there were a lot of your time, there are a lot of changes there.
That's correct. Thank you all very much.
I'd like to, after, I want to get, let everybody have their second, I'd like to keep comments. So anybody else got a comment?
I want to. I think we've got something to say, yes. But I want to say something, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I apologize. I had a personal matter that came up that amended my attention, very personal matter. But I want to commend Mr. Dawery on that comment. And I think we're going to miss if somebody didn't say something. And I know he didn't read it for validation, but I appreciate him. He had said that to, in another occasion, but I really appreciate that. And I look at it not as your humble confession, but I think that it is an admonition for all of us to heed what you're saying. Facts are important, and I'm offended when we're in meetings, and not this meeting, thank the Lord. I'm offended that when we're in meetings, that we cannot ask for the facts. And facts cannot drive us in what we do as public servants. So I want to commend you, sir, on that, on that statement.
Thank you.
I think it's been a very informative and pleasant meeting. Hope the future meetings will continue on the same tone.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say, I appreciate the cooperation and people working together. I feel really good about us moving forward and getting some things done. I know it's a long process, takes a lot of work, a lot of planning, as you said, and I have a great relationship with all of you, and we seem to have that. But I just feel real good about us moving in a direction to really get some things done. I'm not saying you have to improve, especially if you have some balance to move forward. But I feel really good about what we're accomplishing together. And there's no question, we have proposed plans to get this done, and we will get it done. And I think we have people in the communities that are expecting that and waiting for some time. And I feel like we're on the edge of getting some of that done. So I appreciate the cooperation and people, and you as a board champion, and support for accomplishing. But I understand, and I think it's just a good time. When we're standing in line, you've got about 15 others standing behind us, and everybody wants to share a part of the time. But I appreciate you putting in a place of priority over our school deals, and so we can move forward and provide these most needed facilities and relationships.
Thank you.
Your question is, the Oka's been informative, it's helpful. I think it's been, it's been very helpful for me, and I think everybody here, I appreciate the Davenport forum that I gave, and we get presentation the way you broke everything out, which I all understand. The, one of the things that I would, I'd say it's a working plan, but I would like to see is, we have enough money to practically now to go ahead and start a school. With, I've built several schools myself, so we could have a school on the ground in two years, open up, including the design and bidding process and everything else. And it wouldn't be a reason really to hold off another year to do that. That would take that money. But that would be basically practically pay-as-you-go to build. There wouldn't be included in the tax rate and stuff. The other thing I would think of, Mr. Dawery was saying about the bond, the bond issue, definitely wouldn't be, wouldn't fit in, I don't think would fit in the timeline that you presented here for the projects, because we wouldn't be able to get a bond accomplished and know where to start with the projects that are up front. The other thing, one thing I think we, y'all consider is, you can't commit a future county board anymore, and we can't commit a future school board to decision. Things like the agricultural center, the runway extension, those projects, I think they're looking 20 million dollars right there, that may not even come into play in the whole process. And this, down the road, the citizens could, you know, boast their opinions as whether they would rather have a school or an agricultural center or a runway extension. And with the conflict with Seymour Johnson, you may not want to have a lot of, a lot more heavy traffic coming in to Gold Square Airport.
Alternative landing strip would be best.
Remember, right? We got a two-mile runway out there, and it's actually a cubby land.
There's a metal behind the
Anyway, we, I would like to see us go ahead and get started with the, with one school right away. We're going to have an architect onboard certainly within the next month, I would think. And go ahead and get our project out, work out the, excuse me, the interest rate on whether the, what kind of financing options you would go with, it would really be insignificant as far as, like Mr. Flower was saying, based on what the stroke's cost is going to be. That would be a very minor factor. But we really appreciate you coming out, everybody. We really, I know myself, I've gotten a lot of useful information today. Yeah, it's been a very good meeting.
Any others?
Good meeting. No intense fellowship, Jack.
As, as for solider, Mr. Chairman, for Wayne County, I see, one of my big questions, of course, this is something that we're going to do as we go along together, is sustainability, because we do have a lot of projects here in Wayne County that we're looking at. This is, this is not all of it. This is just part of what the county is looking at. So there's a lot of work to do on our part for sustainability and what we can and can't do. And I just appreciate the time that we can come together and talk about this, because you can't solve a problem if you don't know about it. So I appreciate this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any others? If not, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming.